Go ahead.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10 column four dash six that sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Do you want to call the roll?
Yes.
Nora.
Jaskiewicz is not here. Jaskiewicz?
Here.
Kaplan?
Here.
Parek?
Yes, I'm here.
Snyder is not here. Willins?
Here.
Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have with us our board attorney, Mr. King, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Okay, let's start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a long time. We're back.
I'm sorry, you're on mute?
Am I on mute? I can see where this is going. Although I am going to miss the fact that I can have Earl stop people. That was putting people on timeout. Oh, that was precious. Is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none, see none. We have resolutions 2110, 2112, and 2034. Can, oh, yeah, can we have the same people vote on those three? Nora? Who can vote?
Two are, no, they're all different.
They're all different. Somebody want to, somebody want to move those three applications?
Sure, I moved for the adoption of application 21 column 10, 21 column 12, and 20, uh, not 34.
Third second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Okay, Jaskiewicz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes.
And no one else is here that can vote.
Okay, we're going to go right into the applications then, Nora? There's nothing, no other businesses there?
Nope.
No correspondence? Nobody's bailing on us or anything?
No.
Okay, let's call, uh, call application number 21 column 14. VJ Iengar, is that correct? Did I pronounce that right?
Sir, come up to the mic, please. Could you raise your right hand? You swear upon testimony about to give before the board serves yourself you got?
Yes.
And for the record, state your name.
VJ Iengar.
You're the owner of the subject property?
Correct.
If you can sit, sit and keep your hand down. Mr. Chairman, the, what is this one?
For the record, Ms. Snyder is here. Okay, so you're seeking a C variance to install a generator and a pad. And I guess you want it on the side of your house, is that correct?
Uh, no.
Not in the back?
No, no, that's not it.
The deck.
Oh, you're in the wrong. You're in the wrong.
Would you like a generator?
No, I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm reading number one over. Would you like a generator?
No.
We can, we could possibly get you some.
We have some.
Okay, all right. All right, boy, you can see how long it's been. So you're looking to, uh, put, construct a 225 square foot sunroom addition over an existing open deck, and you're looking for an impervious coverage, um, variance of approximately 6%. You have a lot that is, is this a conforming lot? This is an R3 zone. R3 zone, you're, okay, so you've got a substandard lot in an R3 zone. You've only got 7,671 square feet, where the minimum for that, that zone is 15,000 square feet. So if you had 15,000 square foot lot, you wouldn't be here. Correct?
Correct.
So why don't you tell us why you want it? You're not looking for any questions? Hmm?
He's got it there. Exactly.
Okay, so you previously got approval for the deck, and the patio was installed after, and this further increased the pervious coverage. That's, so tell us why you want to put this room on.
Can you have a feedback, sir?
Give us a little background.
Oh, sure.
Why, why do you want to put the room on? Is it, you know, you have a family that likes, you like to entertain? You like to watch the ballgame out there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What, just give us some, give us some info.
Absolutely. So 84 years is quite old, and that's the age of my father. In my house, the way the layout is, uh, is, uh, set up, there's no room, there's no place on the first floor for, uh, relaxation, other than the family room and the living room, which are all formal places where either we congregate to eat food or, you know, sit. So my father would, it would be tough for him to climb the stairs up or climb the stairs down because my basement, my basement has some area where he can rest and relax.
Right.
Neither can he climb up to rest and relax. That's number one reason why I wanted to get a place, which is a sunroom, which is off of the, uh, the kitchen area, the kitchen and the dining area for him to go and walk in, the main floor, uh, for him to relax. Also, COVID has brought in, uh, a lot of work from home opportunity, right?
Right.
Um, for me to have a home office, uh, in front of my family would be, would be, uh, very advantageous, uh, and me being on the same floor would, would also help. So these are a couple of reasons why you wanted to get that.
Basically, family issues and
Correct.
Uh, better, a better quality of life and
Exactly, exactly.
Any other questions by the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, my, my only question was that, that, that we were given approval for amount of impervious coverage, and then when you put the deck on, you exceeded that impervious coverage with the concrete patio, right?
Uh, so February 2021 is when we moved into this beautiful township. November in 2020 is when we actually bought that. So all those things precede me. I have no, uh, I mean, I don't have a history of that. I, I will listen to you and not
You didn't, you didn't do it.
I didn't do it.
You didn't do it.
Thank you. I was not the owner of that property.
What, what does the patio consist of? Is it cement? Is it?
Pavers.
Pavers. Yeah. Water go through them or?
Yeah, yeah, it goes through them all the time.
Well, the deck, is that a, you want to go through that or is it tongue in groove?
Uh, it's, uh, it's a Trex deck, uh, with, with, uh, with the drainage captured at the bottom of the, of the deck, so it, it channels the water back into the ground, uh, you know, on the side of the house.
Hmm, wow. Okay. So it's dry underneath it?
Yes, it is. I would say about 80 to 90% dry underneath.
Yeah.
Is it up in the air or is it down close to the ground?
Uh,
You can't walk underneath it, can you?
Yeah, I can. So the way the house is structured is you enter the main floor in, at the, at the level of the, the living level,
Mm-hmm.
and the deck opens up to that living level, but the backside of the house, since it's situated on a hill
It drops off?
It drops off, so there's a walkout basement, and the patio opens to the walkout basement.
Okay.
And, and the deck is almost on the, on the, on the first floor, if you can imagine what I'm saying.
Effectively, the water does, the way you've got it set up is to keep underneath it dry somewhat.
Correct, yeah, exactly, exactly.
This isn't going to change anything. No. Any other questions by the board?
Yeah. Can you clarify when you bought the property and when you moved in again? You said it very fast.
Uh, November 2020 is when we bought the property. February 2021 is when we moved in.
Did you buy this on sight unseen or?
No, no, we saw it once.
Okay. All right. But again, to the chairman's, um, point, you, you didn't make any, from the time that you purchased it, you made no home improvements to this
Absolutely. Other than painting to the spouses like
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Do you know if deck and the patio, they both were approved in the past?
Uh, as Mr. Bob said
There's a, there's a tashman.
Yeah. Uh, it's, here, here, um, there's a paragraph that summarizes, basically, the variance that he exceeded what was given, and this gentleman's attorney didn't pick up on it prior to closing, so he got
It says here, there's approval, prior approval, October 10th, 2010. 2007.
Charlie, are we there for the patio?
No.
Deck above it?
Yep.
How is that considered additional impervious coverage?
Really, is it? I mean, what's
That's going to be my question.
The addition, the additional impervious coverage was put in before he bought the home. So that's what you're getting is somebody who exceeded their variance, that's what you get.
So that's the increase here? It's not because of the addition over the deck?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess to approve the
So essentially, we're legalizing that?
Well, yeah, basically. Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none, see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Are you members of the public who speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear, I hear and see none. Someone like to make a statement on this relatively de minimis situation?
Sure, I'll just say that it is extremely de minimis, and you're really just not changing any of the conditions with the way the water's flowing, so I'll be a voting for it.
Thank you.
Someone frame religious, religion? Frame a resolution?
Yeah, in application number 21 column 14, VJ Iengar, 33 Winter Set Drive, Lot 14, Lot 17.35, Zone R3, that we grant the C variance, uh, to construct the sunroom addition over the existing open deck contrary to sections 430 dash 35, column 13, and I guess, right, legalize the current impervious coverage, right?
Sounds good.
Second, second.
Any further discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Jaskiewicz?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yep.
Parek?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Result is the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in, uh, next week or the weekend?
Uh, I guess.
Next week, we'll, we'll memorialize this. Is next week our remote meeting?
Uh, yeah, we have a special meeting, but maybe
It'll, it'll be on the, the video next week if you want to actually see us, but you don't need to. You can come, you can call Nora the next day and she'll give you her paperwork, okay?
Thanks, and thank you so much.
Okay, take care now. Okay, let's call case, um, 2053, Richard Taft, 76 Alexander Avenue, a D variance for a storage container. Good evening.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand. You swear upon testimony about to give before the board serves itself you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state your name?
Richard Taft.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Have, have a seat. Now, Mr. Chairman, the, yes, this one.
Okay. You, um, you're looking to, uh, keep a storage container on, on your property?
Yes.
Which you needed D variance for. So you want to tell us a little bit about what you plan on doing and why you plan on doing it?
Um, well, the original plan was to build a house there, and if you'd like, I can give you what we were planning to put there, that is this house.
You're not going to do that?
Well, that's really going to depend on what happens here today, but
Okay.
Um, the, uh, the original plan was in 2008, we were going to build this house, uh, the plans were drawn up, everything was done. The house was there, um, was, uh, built in the early 50s with the original development that was there. Uh, my wife is in a wheelchair, so modifications to the house were going to exceed the value of the house. So we decided to go with a, a, a better home, uh, that was more accommodating to her, including uh, an entrance ramp that's built into the house, um, a, a three-stop elevator and allow her to move around the house, including being able to, uh, sleep in her own bedroom for a change. Um, and, uh, unfortunately, we all know what happened in 2008, um, with the finances of the country, uh, and I was laid off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I was without work for a year.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, that caused problems, of course, with, uh, bills, uh, with my mortgage. Um, I was very close to being foreclosed on. Um, I did manage to get some contract work, but wasn't able to secure, uh, health insurance. And during the period of time between now and then, I've had four heart attacks, uh, including, uh, the last one, which required open heart surgery, um, and two years ago I had a stroke.
Gosh.
Also during that time, uh, my father-in-law, uh, developed a aortic aneurysm. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's what killed John Ritter, the actor. About 5% of the people that have that survive it.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, he was many months in the, uh, in intensive care, uh, many surgeries. His wife Karen support, helped support, uh, the family. She was working and, uh, helped with my wife, who's in a wheelchair. Unfortunately, four years ago this past September, Karen was killed in, or I should say murdered, by an off-duty police officer in Ocean Township, uh, when he was driving his vehicle drunk one night while they, him and her husb, her and her husband were celebrating their two-year rebirth anniversary of him recovering from his aortic aneurysm.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, so we've been through quite a bit. Um, I've finally gotten most of the bills paid, um, and I'm being told by the bank that once my current mortgage is paid, that they will consider doing a mortgage for me to build this house. Uh, we do have to do a little starting over because the original builder, including my $30,000 deposit, has disappeared. Um, so, um, also the stocks that I inherited from my father along with this property will hopefully have recovered sufficiently to, uh, allow for a, a good deposit so that the bridge loan will be, uh, smaller. The plan will be then to move into that house, fix up my current house, and sell it and pay off the bridge loan.
You just have to give some testimony as to why you need this storage unit on this property. That's what the application is.
The storage unit contains pretty much my entire family history. I live in a very small house. It's a ranch-style house, two bedrooms, there are five people living in it. Um, my wife sleeps on the couch, my father-in-law sleeps in the bed, in the dining room. Um, I have a house guest that helps us with the heavy lifting because I can't do it. He lives in the one second bedroom, and then I live in the other bedroom. Um, so all the family memorabilia. My father was an only child, and I have memorabilia that dates back to the Civil War. Lieutenant Taft, who commanded a, uh, battalion at Gettysburg. I have his uniform, his sword, that sort of stuff.
Could you maybe, like, talk about this storage unit?
Sure.
What's made out of, how big it is, where
It's made out of steel. It's a standard shipping container. It's 10 by 10 by 40. Um, it was placed on the property, uh, in 2008. Um, I put some pieces of furniture, a lot of family memorabilia. My father was a, a, uh, electrical engineer, so all of his tools are in there. My grandfather was a mechanical engineer, all his tools are in there. A, a lot of the tools that I bought, um, are in there. There's some large ones, table saws, joiners, things that are too big for the current house. Um, it also contains the lawn maintenance equipment that I use to maintain the property, including cutting the lawn.
Do you have a garage?
No, I do not. I live on a third of an acre.
So why
But there's nothing, no building on this property, correct?
There's no building on the property right now.
Okay, got it.
It's just a storage.
Mm-hmm.
The storage container will go away when, once the house goes.
Why did you select the storage container versus shed? Or something of that order?
A shed?
Yeah.
Uh, because they don't make one that's big enough.
Oh, they make big sheds.
Well, they make some big sheds, but they're usually not as secure as the one that was there. They're also quite a bit more expensive than, uh, what I had to spend at the time. Uh, the current unit cost me about $110 a month to rent. Looking at a storage facility, I would have to dispose of two-thirds of the contents of that shed. Um, it would cost me about twice what I'm paying now, and it would be 30 miles in the opposite direction of where the house is now.
Well, what's the situation with your neighbors? How close are your next, other homes near you?
Um, the front, the front edge is 100 feet across.
Mm-hmm.
All right, it's pie-shaped, so it's about 300 feet across the back. Um, so, uh, they're there, but they're not very close to it.
It's wooded, it's wooded back there, right?
It's wooded back there. The shed, storage shed itself is, um, probably about a third embedded into the woods. It butts up against the fence that is where 287 runs through that backyard.
You, you said it's been there about 12 years?
It's been there since 2008, yes.
How did you wind up here?
How did I wind up here?
Yeah.
Um, the town received an anonymous complaint about the storage container. They also have received several anonymous complaints about the lawn, anonymous complaints about a fox living on the property. Um, it happened about two years after I complained to the neighbors about throwing lawn debris in my yard, including rocks that caused $500 worth of damage to my lawnmower because I didn't see him under the leaves that they put on my property as well.
So you haven't been getting along with your neighbors, so?
Uh, I haven't been not getting along with them. Um, it, I haven't heard
That was really
I haven't heard anything directly from them.
But for all intents and purposes, the measurements that you outlined in your testimony, this is basically a mobile home. This looks like a, like a metal mobile home.
It's more like a tractor trailer.
Okay, tractor, okay. Like the bed of a tractor trailer.
It's a big, mobile homes are not that
It's one of those containers you see on a container ship.
Yeah.
That's all it is. Yeah, I, I got to tell you, uh, Mr. Tev, um, you're, you're asking a lot of us to approve, you're, you're asking for us to go pretty far out on a limb to approve such a thing when there are alternatives. There are storage facilities all over the place. And I know when I moved out, I sold offices, and I had to find a place to, and it's, it's available.
I have looked for storage facilities
Alternatives, they're available.
And they are far exceed what I will be able to afford. They also are no, on the, near the property, so I would have to find some way of transporting the lawn equipment there or do something about the grass to stop it from growing.
Well, I'm sure if you're friendly with your neighbors, they may allow you to keep their, your lawnmower in, you know, at, at their properties.
I have talked to the one neighbor, not the neighbor that I feel is complaining, but the other neighbor. He is, uh, in construction. His garage is full.
I, I don't, I don't have, uh, easy answers for you, and I'll be honest with you. I'm not enamored with allowing people to put containers. It's not a storage shed, it's a container. It's a shipping container, not meant to be long-term storage on the ground. Believe me, I, I worked in Elizabeth Ford
I kind of wish I had known that that would be a problem back when I filed for the application to tear down the house. Um, I discussed this quite heavily with what I was going to do with the property with them.
With who? With who?
Uh, with the people in the
Who?
For the permits. I don't remember the man's name.
In what, in what department?
Where I filed the permit to tear down the house.
In the building department?
Yeah, in the building department. I explained to them what I was going to do, that I was going to put a storage container there.
You obviously don't have any of this in writing.
Hmm?
You obviously don't have any of this
I just had the, have the permit that I applied for. There's nothing in writing about it.
Based, based on the aesthetics of your neighborhood, do you really think this container was going to fly in this neighborhood?
Actually, yes.
I, I don't understand that.
It's buried in the back of my property.
I don't care where it is. I, aesthetically, you have neighbors to the right of you and the left of you who want to enjoy their backyard. And I'm just thinking aesthetically, did you really think that what you put back there was consistent to the
To be honest with you, if either one of my neighbors put in this container, regardless of what we are doing here today
That's not my question. That's not my question.
If either one of my neighbors put that in there, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have no problem.
That's not my question.
We figured that because you have no property.
Yeah.
Regardless of that, and I mean, if you, if you kind of look at this, it's, it's not really about the container, it's about the fact that there's no house there. Because if there was a house there, no one would care at this
No, you know, I, I sincerely disagree. If it was a shed that was commensurate with the, the tone of the, and, and the aesthetics of the neighborhood, I think you would, you would meet with a different, um, reception here. Uh, it is industrial, and you're not in an industrial area.
Okay. Would it help if I painted it camouflage?
Okay, now you're being sarcastic.
No, I'm, I'm
Now you're
No, it's not going to help. It's not going to help painting.
No, no, short answer is no.
You're talking about the aesthetic.
Maybe
I'm trying to change the aesthetic.
Maybe if you put a significant amount of vegetation around it so no one see it, saw it, but that's going to cost you quite a bit of money to get, to have enough vegetation planted around it, I think.
Yeah, around the, around the, the, the storage area, you can, can you put some in?
I, I got to tell you, you have a very sympathetic story, and I feel terrible for your circumstances, but if I was living next door to you, I would not want it there. So I don't know how I could vote for something that if it was next door to me, I wouldn't want it.
Well, I, I must say, I'm not asking for a permit. I'm just asking for, uh, at least up until the point where my current mortgage is paid off, which is in 2000, uh, 2025.
No, it's not going to happen. Not going to happen. Maybe six months. Maybe we'll give you six months to, to rearrange.
In six months, I'll have no choice but to throw out everything that's there.
I, I'm, unfortunately, that's not our problem.
I, I understand that. You're just doing your job.
We have, we have, we have a certain responsibility to this town, and we have turned down, and I'm not saying exactly the same, but similar situations of businesses in residential areas in the wrong thing in the wrong place. Uh, we tried to be very, very, uh, accommodating, but this, this is not, this is not the case here. This is not something that I don't, I don't want to see it there, and I, and, and I probably don't go past your house if, if ever. So, um,
Maybe one year?
You might want to, you might want to consider buying a, what's, what's the most
High-pleasing shed.
What's the size, what size shed can you get without a building permit?
200 square feet.
10 by 10?
10 by 20.
Two hundred square feet.
So you get yourself a ten by twenty shed, and, you know...
And then I just have to decide what I don't keep.
Up to you. I guess that's up to you.
Okay, so I'll throw my family memorabilia away. Okay.
You don't have to throw your family memorabilia away. If you get ninety percent of it into, or eighty percent into a ten by twenty shed, rent yourself a small unit in one of these places. They sell them, they're five by tens, less than a hundred bucks a month, because believe me, I just came out of one a few months ago.
Okay.
All right? You don't have to throw anything away if you think about what you're doing. So, I mean, you don't want us to take a vote on this, do you?
I'm pretty much sure what you're gonna do right now, and I don't like it, there's not much I can do about it. I understand that I'm gonna have to get rid of it, and I will do that as best I can.
You don't understand. If the board votes on it, you're gonna wind up in zoning violations.
I already am, I have a hearing about that tomorrow.
Okay. If you ask for a postponement, come back with a revised plan, this board still has to approve it, which may, may help you out in municipal court.
Yeah.
It's essentially going to delay the inevitable, is basically what it's gonna do. I've been trying, since this anonymous complaint came in, I've been trying to do something to remove.
You didn't listen to me. Don't you understand that one of your neighbors is not happy with it? They didn't call on you because they just felt like it, unless you did something to them and they're trying to retaliate.
Oh, I did do something to them, yes.
So they're retaliating, okay.
I went to them and, as a neighbor, rather than going to the police, I went to them to say, please stop doing that or I'm going to have to call the police. And this is what I got.
So you've been asked, do you wanna withdraw the application and come back with an amended application?
He wouldn't be able to come back. If he withdraws it, he's gonna file a new application. I don't think he got what I was saying to you. If you ask the board to postpone it, you could amend your application to the shed form, which the board may have appreciation for, and you would still be within the current application, and you would be able to go to the municipal court and say, we're on hold for amended plan. If you say, no, vote on it tonight, and you're gonna start all over again.
Okay.
Basically, what we're saying is we'll carry this case, we'll give you thirty days to come up with an answer. We'll give you until July. First meeting, just put him on first meeting in July. I'm sure we got a full agenda, but I don't think this is gonna take more than ten minutes. Is that okay, Nora? You got it? You understand? Where is that, July, July ninth?
Oh, I understand, yeah.
July ninth, Nora?
That would be July fourteenth.
Fourteenth, Bastille Day. So do you wish us to carry this case to July fourteenth without any further notice? You don't have to notice anybody, but we're gonna probably ask you for an extension of time. If you don't agree to the extension of time, we'll vote tonight to deny it. So you agree to all that?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion at that effect?
So moved.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on July nineteenth, uh, fourteenth.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here for that application? Nobody's here. All right, let's call case twenty forty-four, Akshaya Patel. Did I get that right? Forty-seven Rockley Boulevard, Sea Variants to construct walks, legalize the concrete patio, and legalize walks.
Who's gonna testify? Both?
These owners, I'm just helping him.
Okay.
So you're gonna, we're gonna swear both of you in, okay?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's troops, help you got?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state your name, sir?
Dr. Fisher.
And, sir, your name?
Dr. Fisher.
How do you spell it?
Dr. Fisher.
Okay. And how do you spell it?
Here, Mr. Fisher.
Okay. And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a variance of twelve point six seven percent of impervious coverage. You are in an R four zone, R four sixty by a hundred?
Yeah.
And it looks like you approximate sixty by a hundred. Looks like a sixty by ninety seven.
How much control do you want?
Almost control. There are existing, the existing patio is existing, and we just want some walkway to go around the back, is that correct?
Yeah, just, it's, yeah, it's a walkway you put down around the house, one feet.
The walkway is existing?
It's not a walkway, he built it, because the problem is that house is in flood area. I have some pictures here. And a lot of water coming from the neighbor, on the back neighbor, they protect, you know, block the water, so from the backside, empty lot, everything is coming inside. And continuously, there was, crawl area had a sea sub pump, it was continuously running all year round. Water comes back to the yard, and then it come back again in the crawl area. And there was animal problem, the mouse is coming in. We went to the engineering department, and the engineering suggested to put some drain backside and bring it up all the way and see how it works. He tried that, but the front is higher than the back also. So what he did is to protect the foundation, it's not a walkway. One side is one foot, the other side is only half feet, to protect the foundation and protect as much as water go inside the crawl area, he put the concrete around the house.
And who advised you that that would work?
He just did his own.
Does it work?
It works. Now he has only one pump, and water is not, and that also existing deck is wooden deck. He put tile underneath, there's a big pipe that's going inside. When it's raining, all the water from neighbor everywhere goes there and then goes inside, inside the crawl area. And it's a six-inch pipe in the corner here, and engineering department, so you cannot block that fly pipe, because if you block, then it's gonna flood.
Where does that discharge to? The pipe?
The pipe goes to the crawl area and the pump just keep running.
Oh, it runs through, it gets pumped out by the sump?
Sump pump.
Where's that go? Where's that discharge?
It's outside the backyard, again, what the same water goes inside.
Wait, where's the sump pump discharge? In the street or in the back?
On the back. Street is far away, it's on the backside.
And it keeps running back into your property?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
You're pumping water uphill?
And no, the, it's pump out and then this pipe coming out. This existing house, when he purchased, way before this sandy also, is same thing.
But your solution with sump pump, you pump the water to this point, and the water comes to this point, and comes right back into your yard, right?
Yeah, it goes in the backyard, right away, and then it's seeping, and then it comes back to the same pipe.
Thank you.
So he put, without taking permission, he put concrete walkway around, they call walkway, but it's just protecting water going inside and protect the foundation.
But it's not really protecting the water from getting back inside.
No, it's going through the duct.
It slows down a lot.
Slows it.
It slows down a lot. Now he has only one pump right now.
But there's still water.
Still water, yes.
So you can really solve the problem.
He put some kind of drainage from the backside and bring it from, from driveway. And then it's some water going from, but still, whenever low green, neighbor water, and there's backyard neighbor, he protect, I have picture, he put some kind of protection, not water going to his property, it's coming to his property.
Was there ever a professional that looked at his situation, other than the town?
We, he did ask, we asked a contractor, right? He had a contractor. He called a contractor, and he says, it's a major work, you have to take permission, you have to fill the dirt. He did, couple truck came back and put the dirt without permission, C P came, and then they says, you cannot put this, it's wetland.
But did he ever get an engineer to give him a solution rather than a contractor?
So, engineer.
Right, because contractor isn't as accomplished as an engineer who would come up with a plan that works, not just something that maybe doesn't make sense.
So I'm, I'm, myself is a professional engineer, civil engineer, and I went to the town in engineering department to discuss, and he says, just do this way and it might work, but if on the front curb, if you wanna break the curb, then you have to go through town for other permission.
Usually the town employees don't tell you to do this without really...
No, I just discussed with them. I gave them the plan.
Yeah, because that doesn't make sense. The town isn't saying, go fix it this way, it doesn't really work that way.
Are you familiar with the N J D E P flood plain requirements?
Yes.
And did you receive permission to do this work?
No, we did not do any work. Only thing he started, it was around the work.
You raised your property.
Around the house, he put this concrete.
Yes, that's it.
Everything was existing.
Can I just establish a timeline here? This survey was dated, it would say, May, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Is that when he bought the house?
No, he bought it in nineteen eighteen.
Nineteen eighteen, twenty eighteen. Was the patio in when he bought the property?
Yes.
The patio was there, so he didn't put the patio on?
No, no.
Do you know when the patio was put in?
It was there, and we, I checked two thousand ten sandy picture, and the patio was there. So it was there for long.
Prior to two thousand twenty, the patio was there?
Yeah.
Two thousand ten?
Ten.
Two thousand ten.
He put in the concrete walk and the curb and ran out. You said you were a civil engineer?
Yes.
Can you get the water out the front?
If you have to, lot of survey, and then you have to put, or put a pipe around with, you know, something inside, and then you have to dig all the way, and then make sure this, this area right here is lower than the backside, or the pipe has to go straight and goes to the inlet, then it will work.
Have you looked at that? Because right now, it doesn't sound like anybody's doing anything. I mean, pumping the water out, pumping the water out the back there, let it come back in the building again, it doesn't sound like a solution.
That's up to him, how much he wants to spend and how much intense work.
Well, his house is gonna rock unless he gets it fixed.
Yeah, yeah.
Piping to the curb is often a problem with the ice scene situation.
He's got a board of things.
Yeah, but you got the engineer.
Well, he said he put filter in, and then they'd take it up. You put dirt in the backyard, derailed your backyard, and then you had to remove it?
Yes, because he didn't took the permission.
Okay.
So he quit calling.
It's back to where it was when he bought the property.
Yeah, they came to check, everything is the back, the way they said.
And I guess my question would be, when you bought the property, you had an inspection done on it. Did they indicate that the house had a water problem at that time, or is this something else caused this to be new? I mean, I would've guessed that the way the topography of the property is, the water's been there a long time.
Yes.
It was there when you bought the house.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, the report says that they don't believe all the material was moved.
That's correct. All the film material, the first paragraph.
My suggestion to the board...
You had this document from the engineer?
No, I don't have it.
You never saw this document? This is the engineer's report?
It was sent to them.
I know inspector called, I didn't see it, maybe he's telling it to him.
Here, you can have my copy.
My suggestion to the board is...
Because you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to pay attention to this letter in whatever we do, okay?
Is the applicant asked for a postponement? I didn't catch your name, sir.
Ratchis Peta. Ratchis Peta.
Speaks to his neighbor or friend or acquaintance, however it is, and looks at a solution to this where the improvements relate to that solution, because right now, we don't have either. And it was a necessity to obviously get this water. What he's doing now is he's just gonna ride his house away.
Yeah.
So my suggestion is, you ask for a postponement, sit with your buddy, figure out what kind of solution, maybe you can help out or do majority of the thinking process, price it out, say, okay, this is what we need to do. And carry this for, let's do sixty days.
Come back and hold it.
Give you a chance to talk, think about it, put a plan together. You may say, look, it's beyond us, we can't afford it, and we're gonna have to rip this concrete out that we put in. That's where you'll be if you can't come up with a solution. I think you wanna take a, think about it.
So...
And it give you, I mean, if you need more than sixty days to think about it, tell me.
Are we gonna want him to bring an engineer?
Are you a licensed engineer in New Jersey?
I'm a licensed engineer, but I'm not helping him, not in New Jersey, Pennsylvania. I'd like you to see the picture, neighbor is closing this water, and somebody has to, town has to come up and tell them, because...
Well, that's why I'm telling you...
Okay, are you gonna give us these photographs as evidence? Because we're gonna keep them if you're gonna give us the good...
Yeah, I can give you as evidence.
All right, and what is it, please explain what it is, who took them, and when they were taken?
When did you take this picture? Yesterday? He took this picture yesterday.
By the applicant?
By the applicant, he's in the backyard, and if you see from the back, looking on the backyard, he's a left-side neighbor. The plot is empty plot, but the left-side neighbor outside, he put something to protect water going to his property. Now those all water, since his area is a lower area compared to all other side.
What did he put up? A wall?
It is kind of...
Can I see the photographs?
And you have no idea whether his neighbor has permits for whatever he did or whatever? Correct?
I don't know, I never investigated.
These are one, two, three...
With a high-water table, yes.
Sometimes maybe high-water table turning on.
Five photographs.
Majority time it's the rainwater.
Okay, so, I don't know what this is. This looks like more insane.
I have some picture about them.
This is the neighbor's property or your property?
That's his property. His water comes there, he cannot alone move anything, it's just stays, water stays there.
Well, it's stagnant.
And this is all holes made by rats. The snakes comes there, because it's all underneath this damp, there's a big hole and the pipe, all the water coming there, all the rats probably attract us. And then that just stays there, because it's every, everything.
John, what do they do in these circumstances when they're in this area and everyone's getting water?
Yeah, let me take a look, hey? Yeah, it sounds like you're gonna attract the other professional to give us a plan on something that's gonna fix this situation. And also, we have to, looking at the township engineers to report, as far as the flood hazard area and or parian zone, that they have to remove if there's any excess fill still on the property, because you only allowed to build at or below the flood elevation. You can't fill in anything. And you need a general permit that you have to get by the township engineer commits an general permit, governs, and/or then you have to go for an individual permit if that's not the case, to do anything within a flood zone.
Did you get, did you get all that, what Mr. Holloway said?
Yeah, I'll ask owner what he wants, how far he wants to go, because he says, only reason he's here, that he put walkway around the house. And I don't know how intense he wants to work, he can remove the walkway or whatever you tell them, remove the patio, he'll remove the patio. It's a bad situation, we went to engineering department five times. Inspector came and checked all the dirt what he was putting in, he was satisfied.
Well, that's not what his letter says. His letter says that he's not satisfied, he doesn't think all the dirt was removed.
We can satisfy him, we can remove and more water will go in, but it's okay, if he's satisfied.
But we don't, we don't want this homeowner to have any negative impact here. We wanna fix it.
Yeah.
We wanna fix it right, okay? Not, you know, little chewing gum and keep the leak.
The picture shows some kind of fabric, almost like a large silk, that's what I don't expect it to hold back any water.
So the fix you put in helped a little bit, but it didn't cure it, but you're also in violation of the code, okay?
No, I understand that.
Okay, so we're not gonna be able to approve that fix that you made, it didn't really work anyway. So the suggestion by Mr. Chadwick is, you take a master planner, come up with a possible solution and come back to us, because you're not gonna get approval tonight for this application.
Yeah, so, if you wanna come back, take the plan, you hire a professional engineer, hire a...
I'm doing a surgery.
Then who is, let's see, hire someone, and then say, look, he's gonna do something to contain all the water coming from the neighbor.
Whatever the plan is to take care of the water situation on your land, that will stay with, allowed us to approve that plan. What you need to come back with from your...
Whatever the recommendation he makes, then you agreed to do, that's how...
We don't come up with the solution, we're laypeople, you need a professional to come up with a plan that we could review to say, all right, that makes sense, because right now, it's just a mess and...
This is a quality of life issue here. If the applicant improved his property and he wouldn't have to deal with all this stuff, you know, the water, the pump, you know, make, you know, fix it, do get it fixed right. I'm sure it's gonna be a few bucks, but, I don't know, I don't know what to say.
I'll discuss with him and see how intense he wants to spend money.
All right, let me ask, do you wanna chat a little? We'll just, we'll put you into, in the holding pattern, and you go back there, you talk about it. I'm gonna call the next case, all right? And when you're ready, wave to me and we'll listen to what your explanation is.
Chairman, chairman, can I just get two minutes?
Two minutes?
Maybe one.
Okay.
Don't participate if you do.
We're having a glass like...
We're having a glass like...
The one that was boiling, thanks.
Come on over here, let's have sex on this.
We're here for this case. It's Danny.
What is she here?
This case.
This case.
How are you?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I thank you for coming out, especially this is my first hearing in, live in several months myself. It's certainly nice to be back in front of people today. And given the extreme conditions everybody's had to work under, I do appreciate not only your time here today, but your professionalism, Mr. Chadwick, Mr. Holloway, as well as Ms. Jolie, who tirelessly worked to try and get us here today, and we do appreciate this and everybody's time spent. Today, we're here to talk about twenty-five Route Forty-six west, which is the Shell Station and W's Fresh Park, which is the corner of New Road and Eight Forty-six. This is an application a few years back, you approved originally as a seven-eleven. Unfortunately, that bit worked out, we've been operating the store, my client's been operating the store with a W's Fresh. And we're here tonight to provide you a proposal to upgrade the site and to change the building and move it around the site a little bit to make a drive-through operation as well. To present this testimony tonight, I have John Palus, who is a civil engineer, who's a Miami engineer who prepared the plans, and he will testify to you that the site and to the conditions both that are existing today and the conditions which we propose. We will then follow Mr. Palus's testimony with Nicholas Bergrisi, he is a traffic expert, who will be able to answer all of your questions and present to you how the site will operate, not only as it interacts with Route Forty-six and New Road, which we all know is a very busy area, but also how the site will operate on site. And then we'll finally have John McDonough, who will testify to the planning rationale for the relief we're seeking here tonight. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer all of your questions, and again, I do appreciate everybody's time here tonight, and I think it's a site you're all, most familiar with. Without further ado, I'd like to call John Palus.
Sir, raise your hand, right hand, you saw a firm testimony about to give it from the board's, who's help you got?
I do.
For the record, please state and spell your name.
John Palus, P-A-L-U-S.
And you're a licensed engineer?
Yes.
All your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
You've been sworn to either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have referred to this board and 125 other areas, 24, 24 states.
Mr. Chairman has been sworn as an ex-
Mr. King, thank you for your, we'll go through that, I do appreciate it. Mr. Palus, if you could, could you just please describe the site as it exists today and then go through modifications that are being sought for the property?
Certainly. The first exhibit I have is the aerial map exhibit, it's a colored version of what was submitted in the plan, A1. So, the subject property is in the B3, I'm sorry, the B2 zone, Block 770, Lot 1, 25 US Highway Route 46. The property itself is 0.74 acres, as the prior approval granted. We have a 2,800, 18 square foot convenience store, impervious coverage of 61.2%. We have six pumps that are located on the north side of the site with a total of 12 filling positions. Second place, a total of 13 parking spaces. We have one driveway to 46, which is a right-in, right-out, due to the median. We also have a driveway to New Road, which is right-in, right-out, primarily due to the seven lanes of traffic that are on that side. To the north is Route 46, commercial uses beyond. To the east, we have the Rockaway River, with some industrial further. To the east, to the south, is a retail script center with some residential further down, New Road. To the west, we have a commercial located along 46 corridor with some residential down to the southwest. Switching over to the next exhibit, I, and this is the site plan rendering, sheet one of one dated June 9, 2021, that would be A2. Colored version of the site plan with the landscape overlaying on top of it. You know, the, the changes on site from an engineering perspective aren't that significant as we, we're recently here for the redevelopment of site. At this point, the convenience store would be demolished, we would take down the canopy and the pumps as well. We are proposing a new 1,475 square foot building that would be located on the east portion of the site, relocating the canopy, reconstructing it to the west side of the site, so we are changing the circulation on-site, but we're only gonna have four pumps with eight filling positions, so that's about a 33% reduction. The canopy columns are located a little bit closer, the underground storage tanks at the northwest corner of the property are gonna remain, it's a fairly significant investment. We're probably ultimately gonna have to put some sheet piles in when we put canopy back up, we'll probably do a deep foundation, at least for the northwest canopy column, to get it below the depth of the, the tanks to ensure that there's no issues with that. The new canopy will be reduced from 27 foot by 72 to 27 foot by 48 foot, so there's a significant reduction in the canopy size itself as well.
If I can interrupt for that, could you please just verify the date and has these, have these plans been submitted to the board?
This, this represents the latest submission, which would have been the drawings that were revised through May 24, 2021.
That would have been the, for example, sheet number four of the submission.
No, this is the, this is the, this is the new plan.
What's the date on it?
Well, it's, it's dated June 9, 2021. We have the double-stack drive-through on the south side of the site, we have the crosswalk that's located from the sidewalk to the trash enclosure.
June 9?
Because this is a rendering, it's an exhibit, it's, it's dated June 9 because it's tonight's hearing. So, this, this references the site plan that was submitted, that is dated-
Okay.
The drawing was dated October 23, 2020, with a revision date of May 24, 2021.
It was original sheet four, some, some-
Right.
Site change that, and again, it's dated last revised, A5, 24, 21.
May 24th is the basic date.
It's, it's base plan. Correct. We just put the landscape on top of color and pretty it up, so we gave it a new date. It's it, I apologize. As far as access to the site, the new road and Route 46 driveways will remain as is, so there's no modifications proposed there. We're proposing a total of 13 spaces where nine spaces are required. I know that there was a comment in one of the review letters regarding electrical vehicle charging station, we're not proposing any, this use, the fast food restaurant, we, most likely would be something of a coffee shop nature, ideally would be a Dunkin' Donuts. You have a fairly low, very quick turnover. We don't have any seating in the store itself, no one's gonna be stopping, hanging out inside, it's gonna be quick, you're gonna pick it up. This is really a drive-through-only concept, this is the intent. We could certainly put in an electric vehicle start, like we would put two in, if the board felt it was appropriate, but it's not part of our proposal, but if the board felt that they wanted to see that, we could certainly do that. For the drive-through, the drive-through entrance is located in the southwest corner of the site, it's a double drive-through, this is a new concept, you've probably seen it similar to some of the larger, like the Chick-fil-A has a double drive-through, McDonald's has a double drive-through, Dunkin' Donuts is having that because the ordering actually is what's taking the longest, the Dunkin' Donut production of coffee is much faster than what you have at some of the others' franchises that are out there, it's very quick, so processing with the double drive-through, they're seeing significant reductions in stacking, in any case, we have 13 car stacking here, the traffic engineer is gonna testify as a surplus of more than what, what we need, but we like to provide that as a little bit extra safety. We have two menu boards that were located, two preview boards, they're on the south side, along the drive-through lanes and two appearance bars, and I'll speak to the size of those momentarily. As far as loading, we don't have a designated loading space for the site, this type of use, it's only 1,400 square foot building, it's primarily gonna be serviced with box trucks, it's gonna be coming during off-peak hours, probably very early hours or overnight, we don't utilize irregular parking spaces, it's a simple box truck. The deliveries associated with the tanker are gonna be consistent with what's happening today, they're, they pull up a new road stationed at the northwest corner of the site and then egress out to 46, we don't expect any changes on that. Employees, you're looking for the automobile fueling, primarily one, you might have two, but I think this site would probably be one employee, the restaurant itself is probably looking at about two employees, again, there's, they're not expecting any counter service at this, this is primarily a drive-through. Refuse, we have a 10 by 20 trash enclosure that's located at the northeast corner of the site, we've kind of tucked that back. There was a question relative to, in one of the review letters about a generator, it was not our original intent, but if the board wants us to, we could certainly add a generator, we would probably slide it to the rear of the trash enclosure and have it there facilitate the site. Touching based on, I guess, some of the geometry of the site, I mentioned that minimum lot area, the ordinance requires 40,000, we're at 32,333 square feet, that's an existing non-conformity, unless we're, even if we acquire part of the Rockaway River, I don't think that we're gonna be able to, to increase the lot area, the lot width, required is 200, we're at 157, again, in existing non-conformity. The rear yard setback, we're proposing 45.1, it's an improvement over the existing conditions where 50 foot's required, so we are improving the rear yard. The side yard setback is new, the building is being shifted further to the east, which is considered our side yard, there is a, almost a nook, and you can see it at the southeast corner of the site, where the drainage comes in, and that's our eastern league property line. So, our side yard setback is 29.6 feet where 50 foot's required, again, there would be no significant impact because that's adjacent to the Rockaway River, and there is already development over there, just not a structure. And the minimum gross floor area, ordinance requires 2,500, where we're proposing 1,475 square feet. Lighting, we were here relatively recently, we're essentially mirroring the lighting that was here last time, so I don't foresee any significant modifications to what you see out there today. We're proposing to relamp three of the existing LED lights, area lights, we have two new single-headed LED area lights, one double-headed, those are all at 14-foot mounting heights, and then under the canopy, eight canopy lights, which will be a little bit less than actually what was out there before, the building itself has five LED wall lights at the perimeter and the part of the pedestrian area on the west side of the building. Landscaping, the site doesn't have a tremendous amount of landscaping today, we are proposing to increase that, we have a total of four shade trees going in, 109 shrubs, 50 ground cover, 29 perennials, and 58 ornamental grasses, primarily focusing on what would be the southwest corner, a little shade approximated through the building, and then lower vegetation that would be along the 46, the New Road 46 intersection.
And if I just may, there's a comment on number six of Mr. Chadwick's letter today, that we would be happy to work with the forester and the town on the improvements that they see necessary for the planning that we propose here.
Can I just cut in for one second? Do you have a plan?
Yes.
What is your plan?
So, we are asking 90 days extension.
90-day extension? Okay, so what does 90 days give us, Nora?
You know, September 29th, I'm, we're so booked.
September 29th?
Okay.
Okay, you'll, it's already booked or you-
No, we are booked up until that point.
Okay, September 29th, no further notice is necessary, but you may have to give us a letter of extension, okay? Nora will go over that with you.
So, you, you need engineer plan or plan of grading over what?
You, you, you need to, you need to satisfy yourselves, and you need to satisfy us, and what you're doing is gonna, is gonna work, okay? And, and, yeah.
I would say you need an engineer's plan.
Yeah, it should be planned within vertical grades and cross-sections.
We'll work on our property, and town has to do something about outside, because there are a lot of thing existing, water is coming from the neighborhood property, how we can control that?
Why don't you sit down with the town engineer again?
Yes, okay.
And figure out where you are, and then, to the extent you're gonna participate, great, to the extent you're gonna have to retain somebody, you'll figure that out. You've got to sit with the town engineer or whatever's assistance and say, okay, here's what the conditions are. What, what can we do? Because the board has said, we're not gonna approve something that is not working.
Okay.
Okay?
No problem.
And so, motion to carry that case to, motion carrying case number-
No moves. Second, just with, with extensions.
Case 2044 to September 29th with, with extensions and with no further notice required, okay?
Okay, regarding that later, we'll talk to the engineer.
Talk to the engineer.
All the inspector will be moved out.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, we'll see you.
So, picking back up where we-
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Just wanted to, well, you're trying to expedite things.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
I got, I got a quick question on something that was, you keep saying, as we introduced a little while ago, when, when was a little while ago? When you were referring to-
When was the last time this, this?
It was years ago, not a little while ago, okay? All right, yeah, I'm, I'm listening to you.
Fourth, third, four, anybody remember, remember in this case with me?
Yeah, exactly.
20?
Four years ago.
Four years ago.
Three, four, four years.
Wasn't Lurego the lawyer?
Yes.
Okay, so you keep saying, like, I, I, I'm listening to you, and I just don't know, I, I'm having out of body, body experience because I don't remember you, and I don't remember this just a little while ago, that's all.
I, I apologize.
Okay.
It, it feels very recent.
Okay, not to me.
From architectural standpoint, we're gonna mimic what the existing building is out there today, it's gonna be the same stone, brick facade, so if you're comfortable with what's out there today, we're gonna do the same. Again, we'll have two ADA accessible bathrooms, the building's 1,475 square feet, pitch roof, the inside interior retail space, no seats, 318 square feet, so it's a very small area where you walk in that you could place an order. Again, we expect that this would be a drive-through, primarily a drive-through business. The business is along the western facade, we have a service store on the northern facade. And the drive-through is located on the east side of the building to maximize the queue. Utilities, they're all there for the property, there's no need to provide any further extensions to the property. Stormwater, we are, testified, the existing conditions are 61.2% impervious, we're reducing it to 60.9%, accordingly, we're not in major development in stormwater regulations, because we're reducing the amount of stormwater runoff, no further management is required for the site. Signage, there are two freestanding signs, they will remain to be repadded, there's no modification in square footage, height, or anything along those lines. I mentioned the menu and the preview boards, the menu boards are 36 square feet each, there's two of those, one at each drive-through lane, and then there's a preview menu board as well, at 12 square feet each, located about a car length or two car lengths ahead of the menu board itself. As far as the building signage today, the north side has two signs that total 85.25 square feet, we are reducing it to one sign at 25.5, so there's a reduction in sign area there. The, the sign on the west facade, existing's 9.75 square feet, we're proposing a similar sign at the 25.5 square feet as the north facade, so overall, your existing sign area of the existing building is 95 square feet, we're reducing to 51 square feet, so there will be a reduction in the sign area on the building itself.
Taking me back to that one, it's currently nine foot, you put in 25, so you put in a larger sign in on the other side?
Correct.
Almost three times the size of the current one.
Yes.
But the total sign coverage on the site's gonna be less than this.
That is correct. And I just want, for clarification, the, I think there was an omission, the existing canopy signs, we are reconstructing the canopy, we're gonna maintain the same logo on the canopy signs, so that will remain, so there'll be no change in that.
We don't have any pictures of all this proposed signage and everything else we're pulling here, am I right?
I, I could show you an elevation if you'd like, for the, the, the freestanding signs will remain the same, the canopy's the same, I can show you the-
All right, that's all. And, and, and one point from, from our report here, it said the, the applicant is proposing a one-story restaurant building with an eight-seat capacity.
That was the original submission?
That's, that's not, no longer the case.
That is no longer, there will be no seating inside the building.
Okay, because it's still on here, so.
Could you give us a little dissertation on the, the steps and walls that are out there, I think that's some historical history of fishing or something, or is it gonna remain? Who's gonna maintain it, that kind of thing?
I, I don't think we actually know, and, and in the prior applications, that one actually wasn't discussed. So, my history with the site, I know that there's a set of stairs located at the southeast corner of the site that appear to step down to the, the Rockaway River. We don't use it, I don't know who it's used for, title never picked up anything direct related to it. You know, if we need to clean it up, we certainly would clean it up, I, I don't think that the, the owner's aware of anybody who uses it up now.
Oh, I was curious myself.
Yeah, it's, I think it's just kind of been sitting out there, and it may have been used at one point in the past, but since we've developed the site, I don't think we've realized my feelings.
Could you describe the two lane and the two menu boards, is there going to be two people taking orders, or one person that's switching back and forth, and I'm just trying to visualize two boards, if it's one or two people taking the orders, does it really make it that much faster, or do they go back and forth?
I, I, I've actually talked, spent more than I, I time with operations that I care to relative to the drive-through components, they're, they're very drilled in on exactly what they need for that. It's one person's taking for each, so it's one person handles both menu boards, so, but because a car can get in, can kind of get settled, they can look at the menu board. Sometimes if you go to a, a menu, like you're pulling up, you actually have to look through and kind of figure out what you want, so through that, alternating with one person who's handling the, the call, they're just able to push things through a little bit quicker. Again, you know, anticipated to be like a Dunkin' Donuts, if you're getting a cup of coffee, they don't need prep time that's required, so they can funnel it through fairly quickly, it's not like they're making anything that's very complicated, you know, these types of uses.
Is there one person doing the drive-through and one person at the counter for the walk-ins?
It's not a dedicated person, essentially, you're probably gonna have two people that are primarily dedicated to the drive-through, if someone was to walk in, one of the people would walk over and handle that, the, the counters expect to be fairly limited.
You don't have just big people getting gas, getting out of the car, going in?
You'll, you'll get a couple, you know, what we've seen is the majority of people, even if they get gas, wait in the car, and then they'll drive through the drive-through.
All right.
They'll, they'll, they actually, that's the majority of the maneuvers, in the event that somebody had something that was, they wanted to change after they went through the drive-through or they had to wait, that's typically when we see someone pull in and walk in.
So, you can have a maximum of two people in that building, and is it one person at the gas station?
That's typically, that is typically what we would see. If, if we found that the gas required, you know, sometimes a very busy site will have two attendants.
Is it how, I know you said it's typically what you see, is it how it's going to operate at this site, because this is a very important factor as a- Because this is a very important factor as it relates to the ingress, egress of that property, the intensification of the property as it relates to the drive-through and the operations on that and the already, how it's gonna complicate the already existing traffic pattern, particularly on the new road heading towards forty-six just prior to this lot where there's a choke point where two lanes become one lane and then the one lane tries to branch out to four lanes and everybody's gotta commit to where they're going relative to forty-six.
From the gas standpoint, we're reducing six pumps down to the four. I think it can certainly be handled with one person, that would be my expectation.
Well, it's important to know how this lot is gonna operate, not what's typical.
If I may ask you a question of Mr. Payless, which is, Mr. Payless, are you familiar with this place of operation and other locations?
I've been involved in over a hundred various gas station developments.
Okay, and with respect to the ability of the queue to be able to handle the traffic and the gas station to be able to handle the gas business without interfering with the roadway surrounding it, can you please just provide any information you might have on that, in the board?
One person can certainly handle four pumps.
That would be eight cars, right?
Eight cars, that's correct. And there's a, there's a number of gas stations up and down the corridor, so if you were to pull in or you're driving by, you see there's a number of cars, you probably move to the next one. But one attendant can certainly handle the four.
And we'll have some additional testimony from Mr. Verderesi, who will also talk about the actual number of cars in the queue, which is in excess of what you'll find in most any other location. My client has operated at the Garden State Parkway, I don't know if you've seen the ones on the north and southbound side, Dunkin' Donuts and his, Route seventeen. So we'll have some testimony to talk about how those queues are actually smaller than what was being proposed here. And hopefully, you'll see that this is more than that, they handle the volume of this.
So, and maybe this is not the right expert witness, are you familiar with the Dunkin' Donuts that next to, that's next to three twenty-five, Route ten eastbound side, East Hanover, that's the one ninety-nine, Dry Cleaners, and right next to it is the Dunkin' Donuts on the eastbound side. Now, that doesn't have a gas station, it has a small footprint. But the traffic dynamics is very interesting there because I, you know, it builds up, it builds up and then it goes on to Route ten.
If you could just, the Dunkin' Donuts...
You want me to hold off?
What was the address again?
Well, I don't know the actual address of the Dunkin' Donuts, I know it's next door to the Cleaners. The Cleaners precedes the Dunkin' Donuts and I know the Cleaners is at three twenty-five, Route ten eastbound side in East Hanover. So, you know, forgive me, it's next door, I don't know how it's numbered there.
Mr. Verderesi, the wonders of modern technology, I'm sure he'll have a look at that some before.
Right, and similarly, and similarly, this board was presented with Starbucks on eastbound Route ten in Parsippany. And again, we have that conga line, that coffee conga line, as I call it, that spills over to Route ten and I'm just, you know, concerned. Actually, I'm questioning whether you're familiar with that dynamic and again, these areas don't include a gas station.
Mr. Verderesi can talk to that as well, but the time of processing a Starbucks coffee product versus the Dunkin' Donuts is entirely different and I think you'll find queuing differences because of the types of orders that are being made. The line at the Dunkin' will go different and faster than you load with a Starbucks. But this site is not being proposed for Starbucks use.
I understand that.
But again, we'll have to have somebody for you.
Okay.
Outside agencies, we received exemption from Morris County. Morris County Soil Conservation District is pending. DOT, the traffic engineer will speak to. And I know, I think both professionals raised their comment relative to the Rockaway River. I think this development would actually fall under a NJID permit by Rule number ten and subsequently, and obviously as a condition of approval, we would obtain the DEP approval. We would be waiting for the final layout to be confirmed before we go through the DEP process. I didn't have anything else on my direct.
I have a question.
Since Superstorm Sandy, I thought that it was like mandatory for gas stations to have generators, that's not true?
There, I know there was discussion at one point, but I don't think it's for all gas stations.
There has been a program to help fund generators for gas stations, but I'm not aware of, I don't believe that there is any law that specifically requires them. But again, as we testified to here earlier, we'll be happy to put one in the back there. And one of the things my client did, was able to maintain a number of operations open during Sandy and actually brought fuel in from Pennsylvania, Maryland to try to help people out around the state, not just this locale.
Do we happen to know what the condition is of the existing utilities? Because if something wasn't appropriated, we'd have to make an excavation on New Road to hook up the sewer line?
I think you, I think you, one of your comments said we would TV it, we would certainly do that to make sure it's...
Okay. But in that case, if it wasn't adequate, you'd have to dig up that small section on New Road?
Correct, correct. Again, we haven't had any problems with the existing infrastructure, so we don't anticipate that.
And just as, another comment came up about the right-of-way easement and the status of that and I just have, I have a copy of it here, but it was reported or dated March fifth of two thousand fourteen, recorded in the Morris County Clerk's Office in Book twenty-two five eleven at page nine nineteen, so that has been recorded and is in effect. Any other questions by the board?
One quick question, you described the use, do we have hours of operation?
I believe we currently operate twenty-four hours, we would maintain the twenty-four hours for the purposes of the approval.
Both uses?
Both uses, yes.
The other thing, you seem to be comparing stacking issues with Dunkin' Donuts for a Starbucks, what have you and I think your comment was, this is not a Starbucks, is it a Dunkin' Donuts?
Currently, that is the discussions that are happening here, but there is no tenant permit in place at this point in time, but it is a discussion.
Because I'm gonna, the question would be, if all the testimony is, this is how a Starbucks works, but we're not gonna commit to it, somebody's gonna have to dance pretty good.
The answer to that will also be, is that the queuing has been, and Mr. Verderesi will talk to that, with the queuing on the menu board, is there pretty much any operation? I know that there's a concern that was raised about Starbucks versus a Dunkin' type of reviews, but Mr. Verderesi should be able to testify to his knowledge of the types of restaurants that could potentially fit and use this site and the ability of the queue to handle it, which we believe is more than necessary for the site.
So we're gonna have a classic restaurant that would fit in...
Quick-serve restaurant.
Your testimony, okay. A quick-serve restaurant, okay. And that will satisfy the issues of what this is gonna look like in terms of the colors?
Our hope is yes. Mr. Payless, one last question, with respect to the height of the canopy. Could you please just review for the board, that was a comment that came out to make sure that the tanker...
I can be quick on that, the, it didn't show before, it doesn't, well, the plans aren't there, but it says it's gonna be fifteen feet, correct?
It's actually fifteen and a half, but yes.
On your side.
And it's adequate clearance for a tanker.
Yes.
Any other questions over here? Any questions?
Just one question, the engineer's report, did you have any concerns or comments in response to that?
If you have anything specifically you want me to address, I can, but I think it's everything we can...
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that you acknowledge that you have it and that you'll comply.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Please come forward and identify yourself, is that microphone back there, work?
Yes. Hi, Carmen Rodriguez, I'm representing fifty-seven dash eighty-five New Road LLC. We own the property adjacent to twenty-five and forty-six east. So my question is...
Wait, wait.
Yes, the strip mall, New Road Plaza. It's fourteen thousand four hundred square feet, it's all leased, I have nine tenants and it's two acres, I have ninety-one parking spots.
Hold it, this is the time for you to ask questions of this witness, okay?
Very good.
All you can do at this point, okay?
Thank you. The vehicle flow for this drive-through, the entrance is where?
It would be at the southwest corner of the site.
New Road?
It's, no, it's internal to the site, the driveway on New Road will remain the same, there's no modification to our driveway. When you pull into the site, you should pull, you have to pull in, we extended the approach at the recommendation of the professionals and then you have the option to pull straight in to the store, to the gas, which you bear left.
Right.
Or you can make a right into the queue.
But to the drive-through, the only entrance is in, is on New Road?
It's not on New Road, it's internal from southern.
The only entrance to the site is from New...
She's saying to get to it.
The drive-through, I'm only concerned about the drive-through.
You can come to forty-six and exit the drive-through.
No, not exit, entrance, how do you enter the... You can, so both, so you can enter the drive-through through Route forty-six and also through New Road?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
I've made my decision, but, yeah.
Want to call your next witness? Yes, I would. Call Nicholas Verderesi?
Sir, I swear a firm testimony, about to give up the boards yourself, you got?
Yeah.
For the record, please state, spell your name.
Nicholas Verderesi, V-E-R-D-E-R-E-S-E.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
And your testimony is gonna be with regard to traffic, correct?
Traffic.
And you've been sworn in before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yeah, a number of times.
Mr. Chairman's been sworn in, yes.
Thank you. And in particular, Mr. Verderesi, just to follow up on Mr. King's questions, do you have any particular training within the area of traffic engineering itself and designations?
Sure, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering and I'm a licensed professional engineer and a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers as well, and I'm a principal at Dynamic Traffic.
Okay, and you worked on other sites that had included the mixed, quick-serve restaurant like we have here and gasoline?
Yeah, probably a dozen.
Okay. Mr. Verderesi, did you have a chance to evaluate the application that's before the board tonight and come to any conclusions with respect to the traffic, not only its interaction with New Road and Route forty-six, but also the onsite circulation?
I did, I did, so we did a traffic impact study, so, you know, we've been involved with this site for a number of years, so we have, you know, some data, historical data out here along New Road and Route forty-six. I'm not gonna go through all the traffic counts and everything, everyone understands this intersection, it's a busy intersection. The, you know, the traffic through the intersection toward peak hours is heavy, as John mentioned earlier, there's five lanes northbound in front of the property. We are adding a left, a no-left turn lane on the southbound direction, currently is not assigned there. During our four hours of traffic counts, no one attempted during the peak hours to cross those five lanes. There may have been people in off-peak times trying that, but not during peak hours. The same thing with the left turnout, no one attempted the left turnout of that driveway as well. Essentially, the operation of this site is, the majority of the traffic comes on and off of Route forty-six. Almost all of it exits onto forty-six and about half enters from New Road and half enters from Route forty-six. Just to give you an idea of how the site flows today, we don't anticipate that changing much, it's a very similar use as far as trip generation, a drive-through restaurant, whether it be coffee or hamburgers or chicken, they generate pretty similar traffic volumes to convenience store use. So we don't anticipate the operation changing much as far as, you know, any findings the board had previously from the previous approvals on the property. We did, we did, you know, we did counts, we grew those, again, because of COVID, we didn't do any new counts. So we grew those counts essentially following all the methodology that the Department of Transportation is requiring us to do these days with, you know, with the pandemic situation. So we grew all the, you know, all the existing counts, we did the normal peak hours in the morning and the afternoon that we anticipate for the site. If it's coffee, it's gonna be a little heavier in the morning, if it's chicken or hamburgers, it's likely a lunchtime peak or a midday on the weekend. So, you know, we're confident that, you know, the analysis we're presenting to you is conservative and accurate at the same time. So we looked at trip generation, as I said, similar to what a convenience store is, you're gonna see on this site, you're not gonna see much difference in the actual operation of the site. The changes all really relate to what's happening on the property and what the circulation aspects of the property are. So we did receive a letter of no interest from the Department of Transportation. I assumed, I saw it in one of the review letters, I'm assuming the board has it, but if not, I brought a couple extra copies for the secretary if she wants one for the file.
Other statements?
Essentially, all that says is, we don't need any new permits because we're not modifying the driveways and the traffic, there's no significant change in the traffic. So it's, again, as far as onsite, you have circulation, and again, I'm referring to what John marked as A two, circulation around the canopy. The aisle was varied from twenty-four to twenty-eight feet wide, all meeting or exceeding the requirement. There are thirteen parking spaces with six along the front, four along the drive-through area and three in the rear. Those three in the backside of the site are the likely place for the employees to park, so it'll be convenient. We don't anticipate a lot of parking activity, but...
Do you speak into the mic, please?
We're likely... I'll go with this one. We're likely to see upwards, maybe twenty percent of our traffic might be walk-in. So there was a question as to people might park, so some people do walk in from the pumps, some do choose to drive through. You are gonna get some people to walk in and do their business interior to the site. Just people, you know, if there's, you know, ten cars in the drive-through and they, you know, wanna park, maybe they need to use the restroom as well, so they can do both of those activities at the same time. So some will come in, park, walk into the store, again, there'll be a counter there for service for them, but we anticipate the majority of the activity that happened through the drive-through. As John mentioned, the drive-through window where you pick up is up here at the northeast corner of the building. Down here in the gray areas on the south side of the site are two separate order boards. So as far as drive-through operators, and I've worked with a number of different ones, whether they be chicken, burgers or coffee, a lot of them are going to the two-drive-through order board operation. What that does is, currently today, it actually takes less time at the window than it does at the order board. So what you get is, you get an unnecessary gap in the traffic between the board where you order and the window. So if five cars fit in here, sometimes you'll only have three or four because someone takes a long time to make an order. So it takes longer to actually order than it does to pick up your food. So what all of the operators have been doing is going to the two-order board system. And what that's doing is, instead of it normally taking forty seconds or so per order, they're getting that down about twenty-five to thirty percent less, so they're getting it under thirty seconds. So what it does is it starts to fill that in, so you don't get most of the queue happening behind the order board, which is the problem location, because that's where the queues start to spill out of the, of the drive-through. For this specific facility, just to give you some numbers, so we have thirteen vehicles stacked total. So that's all the vehicles that will fit inside from the window all the way back to the, to the end of the lanes. Five are in front of the order board and the remaining eight are behind. So I looked at that East Hanover site that Ms. Snyder had mentioned earlier. They have about, they have a single order point at that facility, so they're not getting that bump of twenty-five to thirty percent. They only have about a six-car queue behind the order board as well. So the eighth car that we fit within the facility, those two cars would be out on the road. So if you're, if you're seeing two cars out on Route ten at that site, they'll be comfortably stacked within this double order board facility here. We've studied, it's almost, I think it's nine different Dunkin' Donuts throughout the state of New Jersey. Most sites have a peak between seven and nine cars stacked and those are all single order. Since the pandemic, that number has gone up slightly, but that's, again, why all of the operators are going to... the operators are going to the dual-order board, because it's pushing the traffic through faster and they're able to better accommodate the activity on the site.
Which driveway is expected to be the busiest?
So there, as far as the inbound traffic, it's equal. So we saw in our traffic counts about an equal number of people turning in from 46 eastbound, as well as turning in, making the right turn in New Road.
What time, what time?
Those are from seven to nine in the morning and four to six in the evening, the peak times of the roadways.
Is it seven to nine in this, the dynamic seven to nine here? People coming up New Road towards Route 80, coming off Bloomfield? And is that north? I think that's north, right? Is that north? I'm sorry. Oh, no, that would be south, right? South. Down New Road towards Route 80, isn't that like, and then-
Towards 280, I mean.
PM drive would be-
280.
280.
So going south towards 280?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, coming south to 280. And then PM drive would be going north New Road to Route 46?
It's in the, coming across the intersection in the morning, the traffic is heaviest.
Yeah.
Coming south.
South.
We're not drawing, we're not getting any of that traffic. And the traffic going south-
But if you were-
We're not get, this site isn't set up for that. They're going some, they're probably going to Wawa at the end of the road to get their coffee or whatever, because they're not coming here.
You don't anticipate-
The people that were picking up-
Right. Let me, let me continue on that example, okay? So, right, and I, I can see your point in regards to holding out for Wawa, but for that coffee fanatic, let's just say, coming off that ramp, do you foresee, or is it your witness in regards to monitoring the site, that people would make that left onto 46 and come into the egress off of 46 to access that drive-through? Do you understand what I'm saying? If they really wanted to get the coffee at this particular site?
So if they wa, if they were coming south to get to this site, yeah, they would, they would make the left at the traffic signal.
Right.
And then make the right into 46 is what they're doing now, yes.
That would be pretty much the people that were going to continue 46.
Yes, because you can't continue south from here.
Turn around and get, and get on 280.
Yeah. So the, the majority of the people here are people in the morning. So if it's a coffee business, you're going to get the people commuting east, because that's the heavier direction in the morning. Actually, it's equal here, interestingly. Equal traffic on 46, but commuters on 46 traveling east are picking them up. You're also picking people up that are coming north on New Road, that either are starting their commute and they want to go east on 46, or they actually are going up to, they could be going east on 80 and come up and use Bloomfield Avenue and go down and get on 80 from there. So you're getting both of those, but almost 90-plus percent of the traffic coming to the site is someone just driving past the site on 46 or driving past the site northbound on New Road.
Could you point out again where the Dunkin' signs are going to be?
The signs?
Just if you're coming down Route 46, how far?
So there's a pylon sign, it exists, that's sitting right here, that you can view. And there's also another sign here. So they're, they're essentially located at both, identifying the two driveway locations for eastbound traffic and northbound traffic.
So I have two questions. So when you're traveling on New Road, and you pull into the right, so you said 50% of the traffic pulls in off of 46, 50% pulls it off of New Road, right?
Correct.
Of the 50% that pulls in off of New Road, how many pull out and continue on New Road, and how many would pull out and go onto 46 east?
Yeah, so only a handful came back out onto New Road.
Come back?
More, no, no, most of them get onto 46.
Oh, so, okay. Because that's my, I guess my biggest concern right now is the traffic queue building up on, backing up onto New Road.
Yeah, so I can, I'll give you the exact number so you understand.
Okay.
So in the exist, this is currently how it's operating today in the morning. 39 people made a right turn in.
Yep.
Only three people came out and made a right.
Okay. So that's-
Most of the people were people that were probably coming up here and making a right onto 46. They came, did their business, and then made a right on 46.
So then the other question is, I would assume if it's a Dunkin' Donuts, it's a, their peak hour is more in the morning-
Morning.
And not in the PM?
Correct.
Okay. But we don't know we're committed to Dunkin' Donuts yet.
Did you notice any cars using it as a cut-through for avoiding the light?
I didn't notice it, but it's always possible when you're on the corner, yes.
The person that's coming to this site and is going to get into the drive-in lane, the first time he comes, what's the likelihood of him going past that driveway?
Past the drive-through driveway?
You don't see it quick.
When he turns in?
And the driveway is right there.
We have some, we could probably add some paint for the, make the right in for the person that doesn't see it. But when you put, when you're on New Road and you're making the right in, what's right in front of you is the drive-through, so I don't anticipate that people are going to miss it. If you miss it the first time, you go park or you drive around the canopy and they come in.
It's to the right. It's not right in front of you.
Well, you're making a right, so you're looking to your right, so it's right there, you see the drive-through.
My one question, so, there's more. So the car's coming off of 46, just help me on this one. If there's a queue from the cars off of New Road, eight cars are stacked back there and there's five in the lane or whatever. So I'm coming off of 46 now and I come into the site, where do I get in the queue?
Uh, you just get in the back of the, there's two lanes, so you could pick whatever lane you choose to use.
To get to the back of that lane, right?
Could you show that traffic pattern for us?
So the pattern that we're talking about is making a right in. So you'll likely, I guess you have two options. You can come straight across the, between the canopy and the building. Then circulate around, then make a left in. Or if you make the immediate right, circulate around the canopy, then you're driving straight into the, I, I would say most of them are likely coming straight down, making a right and a left.
If there's no cars there, there's no fight, no problem, right?
Yes. Well, that's why we provided 13 and a dual-order board, because we don't want it to back up past that.
How many cars can be queued up-
13.
-on the order board to the driveway?
So there's, we're showing eight vehicles on there. You might be able to get a ninth at the back of this one, but we're just showing eight.
Eight from the order board?
Yes.
Yeah, and then 13 for the complete.
Will cars stick out from under the, getting gas under the canopy? Will they be impacting the driveway at all?
The aisles are oversized, so I don't have any issue with if it did stick out slightly, but, you know, maybe a couple feet half up in the front.
What will it look like when deliveries are made?
Yes, the deliveries happen, again, the deliveries are going to come in box trucks, and at least for Dunkin', we know they're coming early morning with the donuts before there's really any activity here at 5:00 in the morning.
What about fuel?
Uh, fuel is controlled by the operator, so, you know, we will stipulate, and I'm sure we did in the last, I wasn't the traffic engineer the last time, to bring it in on the off-peak. Now with a, with a morning user, he's likely not going to want to bring any, any tractor-trailer activity in the morning.
At night or whatever.
Yeah, if he comes at 4:00 in the afternoon, it's not going to be a problem, because the, you know, if it's a Dunkin' Donuts, there's not much going on.
So the traffic patterns that you have studied for establishments that have the dual lane driving up to the order boards, you witnessed no instances or cases where there's a regular ebb and flow that does bleed into and go into the main roadways?
Well, all the ones we've done so far to date, because they've all been in the past before, essentially, most of them before the pandemic, none of the ones with the two order boards have been built, at least for Dunkin' Donuts, but we've observed them for, you know, other users. McDonald's is, is one that we've, we've observed.
And so do they, do they overflow into the, into the area roadways?
Not, not at the, at the McDonald's ones that we've done with the, with the two order boards. They've been controlled well with the two order boards.
You're confident, given the number of cars that go through there, that eight is all you're expecting to back up?
Well, we, we actually, so when we do our queue counts, we count all of the cars in there, because there are some cars queued in the front. So when we looked at seven to nine, that includes, used to be three in front of the order board, they've moved the order board back and came up with a better system. They have some new people there that actually came from McDonald's and they're working at Dunkin' Donuts. I know I keep talking about Dunkin' Donuts, but any of the users of the two drive-throughs, menu boards, it's been tested enough now and, and they've figured it out. Starbucks doesn't do two, so it's not likely to be Starbucks. There was some discussion about Starbucks. Starbucks doesn't go with the sites with gas as well, so it's, it's not going to be a Starbucks facility, but-
Assuming it's-
Yeah, we're, we're more than comfortable, this is long, a longer stack than we've designed, and we've done a dozen in the last three years or so of just coffee. And we've done McDonald's, I've done Chick-fil-A's, you know, Chick-fil-A's a whole different animal. We, we put 50 cars in the stack now for that. But this is, this will never be, it's, it's 1,400 square feet, and they require seating, and it's obviously not any of those users. It's not McDonald's, it's not going to be, you know, someone that requires seating, but it could be, you know, maybe a Popeyes that relies on drive-through or, or even a Burger King possibly, it's a little small maybe, but-
And this is going to be open 24 hours? What kind of staff, when will staffing be modified? Because right now, it's, it's three staff? One for the to-many wards, one for the gas station?
Yeah, three, I mean, maybe at peak time in the morning, if it's coffee, they may end up with three inside the store and one at the gas. As you're aware, there were 12 fueling positions here before, and the owner is comfortable going from 12 to eight, because his business just isn't that heavy for the gas, so he's going down to eight, so he's comfortable that it'll just be one under the canopy to handle the eight fueling positions.
Any other questions of this witness? Any questions by members of the public of this witness on the testimony given? Please come, come up, come on up.
When will you know what type of franchise is going to be in this drive-through?
I'm going to pass that one to our attorney, because I don't know the answer.
I, I don't have a timeframe, I don't have one, an answer for you here tonight on the decision, but I can say the owner is actively working on that issue. It's a public issue.
Okay.
Five-minute break.
All right, thanks.
Scott only needed one minute.
Yeah. Yes, I completed it.
Can you, can you describe that?
Back on the meeting.
Who's this guy?
John?
I'd like to introduce my, my third and hopefully final witness tonight, John McDonough.
In my box.
He was a professional planner who appears to be known to this board. I remember him when he had dark hair.
He got a little longer, too.
Do you swear a firm testimony about to give up with the boards yourself, you got?
Yes, I do.
For the record, you're a certified planner?
Uh, yes, my name is Sean McDonough, I'm, I'm the project planner, licenses are current and in good standing.
And you've been qualified before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, you is a sworn man qualified.
Thank you very much, Mr. King. Mr. McDonough, are you familiar with the application that's being presented here tonight?
Yes, I am.
And have you reviewed this application with respect to the planning rationale for the relief that's being sought here tonight?
Yes, I have.
And can you please review for the, and we've given an exhibit to the board, which we'd like to now mark as eighth, three, at least we're up to. And that is a- Eight, eight-page exhibit?
That's correct. It's a packet of photos and maps to document site condition and context. Actually, six photos, six.
And that you prepared?
I prepared them, yes.
And so the, each, each member of the board should have a copy of the document? As well as, I remember the public has also been given a copy of it as well. Mr. McDonough, did you prepare that exhibit?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Now, if you could, for the board, please review what you, you learned about the site and what your thoughts are about the planning rationale with respect to the relief being sought here tonight.
Sure thing. We're looking at a, a well-known corner in the community. We're at the junction of 46 and New Road, which we know is a major, I'll say, transportation node in the community, right off of 280 there. This site, again, is one that has been repurposed by this applicant here. This applicant does this throughout New Jersey, takes sites such as this with the, with the gas convenience model or even the gas repair model, and repurposed them, modernized them. It's exactly what the applicant did here 10 years ago, and clear proof is just go back and look at the Google Photos from what this site looked like prior to this applicant getting it and repurposing it. This is a constant evolution of a site, and, and land use, as we know, evolves. It's not meant to stay still in the public eye. More than any other land use, retail is supposed to evolve to stay fresh. If we go back and look at this site back in the 1930s, it was a farm, it was a farmhouse. 46 wasn't there, New Road was there, and there were some steps probably that went down for the farmer to access the river and do his fishing or whatever. So they serve no purpose today, it's just a remnant of what was. In 1950s, 1960s, we see the highways start to come in, Route 46 and New Road. Shortly thereafter, the service uses started to follow, including a repair facility with gas. Again, the evolving nature of the use, this has always been a gas station for upwards of six or seven decades. Started with a towing component, a repair component, the repair cars all over the facility as well. We look at the 1980s, that retail strip center adjacent, that we've heard from our interested party, wasn't even there back in the 1980s. And then, of course, the 1990s come around in 2000, 2010, we start to see the evolution, the change of this use and the repurposing again, which is exactly what this applicant did. Took that repair component away, that was actually there in the 80s, and that went away with a, with a prior approval. And then in the 2010 range of time, that's when these upgrades that you see that are out there now took place. There's going to be a shift of the reconfiguration of the site as it now exists, changing it 90 degrees, so we'll see it's oriented towards New Road as opposed to 46. That is going to improve the flow, the function and the operation of the site, and introduce what, again, is a use that I believe or an adaption of this use that has gained currency, certainly within the last 12 months, much like Zoom has gained currency. The drive-through, which has always been there, has gained currency as well for its convenience, for its safety, for avoiding those pedestrian and vehicle conflicts of people going into and out of a store, keeps peoples in the cars, gets them in and out of the site. So with that predicate, we'll just give you some background of the physical aspects of the site, and then we'll launch right into the proofs. I don't think we'll take particularly long here. But with respect to the site itself, again, we're looking at a three-quarter acre site on the corner of New Road and Route 46. It's developed with an auto service station and a convenience store already. Second page shows that we're at the corner of Route 46 and New Road, which, again, as I said, is a major transportation node. It is a signalized intersection, so movements at the intersection are protected for vehicles. And the plan here are for modifications to reconfigure that fueling area, construct this new QSR land use, which I think, again, with that drive-through amenity, is certainly gaining currency and responding to the industry trend. There's a reduction in the number of pumps from six to four, and the size of the store from north of 2,000 square feet down to 1,475 square feet, with just a very small component being dedicated to actual retail use. This is not inviting as a, as a walk-in type of use, certainly not as a sit-down type of use. And that's why this will cater to, again, the efficiency of the operation of getting vehicles through the site. It's a nice complementary land use to that which is there. It's a, a use variance, it's a conditional use variance, it's, it's not a user variance, so we're not here talking about a, a particular brand. It lends itself very well to name-brand land uses that are, that, or name brands that would, would go with this, but again, we're not pigeonholed to a particular brand at, at the present time. With respect to other aspects of what we've included in the packet here, sheet number three is a color coding of the surrounding land use context. Key point here is along 46 and New Road, we're looking at predominantly non-residential uses, that's what's in red. There are the apartments, which actually came after the gas station. If you go back and look at the historical maps, that are on the opposite side, that's one of the reasons why we have a conditional use variance here, but we're not worsening that condition- why we have a conditional use variance here, but we're not worsening that condition, we're not exacerbating that condition. And in fact, the improvements back in 2010, 2011 granted the same exact relief that the applicant would need now for proximity to residential right on the other side of New Road. And clearly, there's a divide between the subject site and New Road by virtue of all those lanes of traffic that come in between. Fourth page is just the zoning. Again, to remind the board here, we are in the B2 zone. This is not the B1 zone, this is not the neighborhood commercial zone, this is the highway commercial zone, where highway commercial uses are not only permitted but encouraged as well. It's the exact type of use that is wanted here along the highway, service uses that will cater to the motoring public. The land use follows the transportation pattern, and that's why this land use is here and adopting. Five and six are drone photographs of the subject property that we took a couple of months ago, just to show the physical condition. You do get a sense of, I'll say, the healthy viability of that retail strip center right next door, and this will add to the viability of this site as well with this newer version of the land use and that drive-through amenity, which is in high demand. Importantly, some of the key things that will jump out from these advantages, we have two signs out there now, two freestanding signs, so we're not increasing that in any respect. You do have the canopy signs, you've got the two signs on the building as well. So basically following the pattern of what's already out there, again, with the repurposing or the repanalizing to reflect what the ultimate new user would be here. So not a substantial change in the overall sign package. And on the last sheet, I actually say that's a view looking southeast, but that's a view looking northeast. So we've given you a view in one direction, and then we've given you a view in the other direction as well. Again, just to give a sense of the context and the condition of the property. With respect to the relief that the applicant needs, the primary relief here is for D3, conditional use relief, both with respect to the conditional use standards for an automobile service station with a retail component and a fast food restaurant with a drive-through component. Both are permitted conditional uses, so importantly, we're not looking at the higher or more stringent test of D1. This is a D3 variance. We look at the conditions of themselves and whether any of those purposes of those conditions are being violated. These conditions are more akin to bulk relief. So basically, what we're looking here in terms of the test are what you would traditionally see for bulk variances with the higher aspect of a supermajority vote as opposed to a simple majority vote. In terms of the basis for the relief on the positive side, the proposed modifications, as you've heard, will improve the function, the flow, the operation of the site. With that added drive-through amenity, we're going to benefit public safety, public comfort, public convenience, efficiency, and a nice weather protection element as well, that people do not have to get out of their cars on a rainy day, a snowy day, an icy day, or the like. The modifications also, going all the way back to John's testimony, will make the site greener. We're going to improve the pervious coverage on this property, and our applicant always adds a robust landscape to its improvements and properties. That's happening here as well. And as you've heard through John's testimony, all new site improvements as well. So it's a 10-year-old site. This is going to be another complete modification or another complete modernization of that land use that's there. All of the above would promote purposes of the land use law, especially Purpose A, Purpose G, Purpose H, Purpose I, and Purpose M. And then finally, with respect to the negative criteria, we look at those individual conditions that are being deviated. In terms of the conditional use standards for auto service stations, four of the eight standards are met. The four that are not met were previously granted. The proximity to residential and other service stations is exactly the same as previously approved. The side yard setback of 29.6 versus the 50 feet is going to go in an area that would be closest to the river but is already disturbed. The edge of pavement is not moving closer to the river. The building is moving slightly closer, but the improvements themselves are not. And you can see that from the aerial photographs we've given you. The driveway offset being less than 50 feet from the intersection and the width being greater than 30 feet, again, match the existing condition. Our interested party had a concern about those driveways. They're not changing. They're going to be exactly that which is there now. And then the signage package is really going to maintain or modify that which is there now. You're allowed one road sign, you're allowed one wall sign. The applicant has and is asking for two in both regards, and we think the overall sign package is tasteful and efficiently guides wayfinding and clear and safe identification of the site. With respect to the drive-through, two conditional use standards are being deviated. We're actually looking at nine of the 11 actually being complied with here. The fast food drive-through lot area of 0.74 versus one, we have a well-thought-out plan here by an experienced engineer who does a lot of these, that the site will function safely and efficiently, notwithstanding the lot area. And the building drive-through size is going to be at 1,475 square feet versus 2,500 square feet. This is a more efficient means of serving the patrons here. Additional space is not needed. We think this operates at a premium with the size that's being proposed here, and optimal efficiency and works appropriately here. That covers the D relief. And then finally, with respect to the lower C relief, I think the board can move favorably in that the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. Clearly, this is taking what's there and making it better. None of the C relief would cause impacts of a substantially adverse nature. I know that John hit every one of them when he gave his testimony. Again, I'll just tie them all back to the C2 balancing standard. If the board wants to hear any more testimony with regard to any of them, the setbacks, the driveway radii, the buffer, the signage, I'll clearly go through it, but I think the test is clearly met here. And in that regard, I believe the statutory test for relief is met and approval is warranted.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonough. I have nothing further for this.
John, sheet number six, where it shows the entrance off New Road and the Shell sign, is that sign going to be in the same location so the entrance to the drive-through would be just beyond the sign? I'm just trying to correlate it through the...
Just take a double? It caught us all off guard. It looks like it's in the same location, yes.
Right, so you come in, just past the sign, then you would turn into the drive-through?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
On New Road entrance side, approximately how many cars in between the entrance to your site and the previous next plaza?
I don't know if that's Mr. McDonough's answer, but Mr. Verdiis is still here. I'm not sure if he has the answer for that.
I could, I'll defer to Nick, but I'll say by I, it's four to five, five to six between driveways.
So the overflow of the queue, let's say?
Would be another four to five, yes. Or five to six. I'm looking spatially. You see a little white vehicle?
Uh-huh. What's your guess, Nick? From the edge of the driveway from the strip center to your driveway, how much space is there? Is not 100 feet? What, five cars?
Yes.
Can we put a sign up out there saying queuing for unknown Dunkin' Donuts, not permitted on the street?
Are we talking...
I'm not saying they're going to pay it next to, but I...
Like people usually know they can't do it.
I think you need a sign when you turn onto the site that identifies that driveway that's right there.
Queuing up...
It seems like a pageant right turn arrow would solve that problem. The other thing I was thinking is, do you need to do a don't block the box grid at the driveway where I'm afraid cars might queue to get in? Like, if you're coming off of 46 South, if you want to get in the queue, you're going to block the driveway to wait. And I'm thinking if you stripe that off where you can't block the box, that might resolve some of the issues.
You're on 46 Eastbound?
No, so if I'm coming off 46 and I pull in, I try to right, and I'm going to cut down and get into the drive-through.
So I think what we're talking about is in this area here.
Cars waiting there to get in because they're going to block the New Road people from being able to turn in.
Yeah. We've done that in other sites with entrance to the drive-through. We can do that. We can also add a small, I don't know what your ordinance allows as far as directional signage on the site, but we could put something small, two square feet or whatever that just has to drop.
Whatever you think you need to make it work better.
Yeah. And I like Mr. Kaplan. I think we were talking about it before, about putting the right turn arrow that when you come in.
Right turn arrow helps them.
We can work with Chaz on some striping in this area. It'll be a combination of like moving this arrow down, maybe striping a little something in the middle here and a little do not block the box right there.
Clearly, if I come out onto Route 46, I can only go eastbound on Route 46, so I can only turn right.
Correct.
If I come out of this site to New Road, can I go turn left?
Well, not legally.
Legally, you can't. So there's no left turns?
No left, no left turn out and no left turn in. So it essentially operates as two right turn in, right turn out drives.
Now, Dunkin' has been definitely promoting their order ahead and come in, and sometimes they have, you know, you can sit in your car and it'll bring it out to you. You just run in and it's already made up for you. So what's your experience with that? Because we were talking about that you come off 46, park, run in, grab your whatever, and then back out and go back on 46.
Sure. We anticipate that. So, I mean, I'm a mobile order person myself, so I don't use the Dunkin' brand, but I use a different brand. And I park and I walk in and I come back out with my coffee. Because again, I'm one of those people that when I see 10 cars in the queue, I'm not going to be the 11th one. So I just order ahead, I go in, I get it, and I'm out fast.
There's one right in front there.
There's six right across the face, another four, so there's really 10 oriented right to the building, which is way more than we're going to need.
So we keep using Dunkin' as what we believe is going in there. And I guess part of the reason is because I think it's probably the most favorable for you guys to present your case.
It's, for me, it's actually not the most favorable.
Why?
Because their queues are longer at the drive-through, and they get more traffic in the peak hour.
Then Starbucks?
No, no, this would never be Starbucks. So we would take Starbucks off the table. I'm talking about chicken and burger place or sub place. This, the peak in the morning of a Dunkin' is higher than the peak of any other one of those users.
Right, but the peak in the morning is probably less of a concern because it's less traffic at that time at that spot.
Yeah.
Right? The peak traffic on New Road is probably five to seven.
Afternoon, yes.
Which is, which Dunkin' works because there's people, less people getting coffee at five to seven. So that's why, to me, that's an optimal use as opposed to something that is busier later, when traffic is busier later at that spot.
On New Road.
On New Road, correct. I'm not really, me personally, I'm not really concerned about Route 46. That seems to have a flow to it that makes more sense, and it doesn't interfere with the other property. Really, I'm more concerned about any potential queue on New Road affecting the adjacent property especially, not just traffic, but the adjacent property.
Well, I mean, we're going to, I have concerns not only for the adjacent property, but I also have concerns in regards to its impact relative to that choke point by Rutgers Village. That is a significant choke point. If anybody witnesses that dynamic on northbound New Road, especially during the afternoon drive, and we don't even have to talk about afternoon drive, we could even just take that from noon on because there's a lot of truck traffic coming down, and it is extremely tight to the point where there is a lot of traffic already with this existing condition as they're operating, going all the way back to that, the dental center that we've, they're converting to that recycling that this board has approved. And so, you know, this is a very congested, there's a lot happening here, and this part is very congested before it breaks out to five lanes, and everybody's got to make, you know, commit to a lane depending on where they want to go.
If I may, Mr. Verdiis, when you first looked at the site for stacking, did you, what did you believe was necessary, or what is the stacking today that's being provided?
What I thought was necessary was probably about 10 cars. What we've been able to do here is 13, and 10 is when it's only a single lane. So I have 13 now with two lanes, so I feel even better about it, about stacking. As far as the volumes, and there was some discussion about when it's busiest, let me give you some comparisons. So a fast food restaurant in the morning generate, does, it generates less than the coffee, but a convenience store generates almost exactly the same amount of morning traffic as a Dunkin'.
You're making it seem like we would approve a convenience...
There's one there now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about your McDonald's. I'm sorry, pardon me.
Then the peak for the fast food restaurants, so the burgers and the chicken, their peak is at lunch. You're not concerned with lunch. In the evening, the peak of the coffee is slightly less, about 10 trips. So it's not that much less than what happens. And then on the weekend, the coffee's a little heavier. So the coffee has a heavier peak on the weekend than the...
My experience is that the traffic really is the problem during the week, not on the weekends.
Absolutely.
Right.
Is there a no left turn coming south on New Road?
There is not today, but we're adding a sign for that.
You are?
Yes.
I have a question.
I've never witnessed.
Ready's lighter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I've never witnessed anybody trying to do that.
You know, I have a question. We are talking a lot about, everything about Dunkin' Donuts and the traffic from 46 and the New Road. The numbers you gave us, does that include the traffic for the gas station?
Yeah, the gas is a wash, so actually, we didn't really factor it in, but the gas is, because there's less pumps, it's technically going to be a lower number because there's less movement of vehicles. So if it starts to queue up, you're going to have people skipping, where when there was 12 fueling positions, they could accommodate more on the gas.
On the fifth side, I think because you have a less pumps, less number of pumps, are you going to have like a car that like has a tank on the right side, can go only on one side and a car on the left? Because that complicates the, you know, internal circulation.
Yeah, they have the long hose that they could flip it to the other side, yes.
All right, thanks.
I have a question, and I don't know if it goes to John McDonough or the application. We've talked about what it won't be, and then we kind of say, well, it's like this, but we don't have a contract. Somehow, rather, you're going to have to set some boundaries to this. I think it was already said, it's not going to be a Chick-fil-A, couldn't be accommodated. But if the board went ahead with this, approved this application as it stands, it could be a Chick-fil-A.
And take out...
I don't know what, you know, we can't say no chicken, no hamburgers. Maybe we can. I don't know if that's... This question, I know you have questions, but they've got to see whether or not you can make limits to this.
I think the intent is that it's a coffee shop. So whatever that ITE classification is, that, just stipulate that that's what it'll be.
That's it?
It's going to be coffee.
Yep, whatever that land use category is.
For whatever reason, you ruled out...
Excuse me, we're not ready for you yet, okay?
Starbucks because of some reason. You don't like them, I guess.
You said that fuel, they don't go with fuels.
But on the standpoint of site selection, that'll also, when the franchises come and try to do a site selection, they're going to look at some of those factors as well.
Yeah, I mean, Mr....
We can't, we can't count on franchises having the interest of the township in mind when they do their site selection.
We just went through this with, it was an application for a 7-Eleven on the corner of Littleton Road for Sipney Road and 202, and they wanted a 7-Eleven. They wouldn't tell us what the other store was going to be because they didn't know. And we went around for hours and hours, and they finally withdrew the application. So...
Well, here we're going to live it.
Yeah, yeah. So I, yeah, I want to zero in as much as we can, if we approve this, as to what they're going to, what it's going to be. Excuse me one second, ma'am. You will have your opportunity, okay? We are nowhere's ready yet for your questions. We are nowhere's ready yet for your questions. To exclude a specific business or franchise may be objectionable. You want to narrow it down to the ones we may select, that'd be a different story. But I'm not sure we can do, quote, exclude you of one brand over another kind of brand. We don't have to approve the application either. Very simply. I'm ready to go home right now anyway, okay? So... No, no, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying... Cooperate with us. Cooperate with us, okay? What I'm saying is, I'm appreciating the fact you want affirmative. You want to come back when you've got the tenant? Then we'll come back when you've got the tenant, okay? All right?
They don't have a conference.
Well, I think the offering was it would be limited to the ITE classification for coffee shop. I don't know what that looks like.
What is that? Can we see that in writing?
That is guffoly poop. Yes, exactly. I'm not voting on that. I'm telling you. I'm thinking voting for things with blindfolds on on this board.
I agree.
We've got to stop this.
I agree.
This is nonsense. We approve things that vary in scale and look like bad patchwork of architecture. I'm sorry. Yes.
If I may, well, I think we need to finish with Mr. McDonald, the principle of the property or here, he might be able to address some of these questions for you as well. But I am working with you, my apology that came off, I'm trying to work with you on narrowing it down and addressing your concern about what might go here, like it's a Chick-fil-A, you don't want to hear because we all know those types of things. But in terms of a resolution and decision, I'm more concerned about making sure we do something in the sense that we're doing within the confines of what we should be able to do, which is limited to a certain use, I don't know. But that's certainly a discussion. I, the affirmative, I believe we're more able to do than the negative, and I'm just trying to make sure we do it correctly. But I totally understand where you're coming from and not approving something you will live to regret. And we think you're going to be very happy with this. I think what you've come through here looks significantly better than the application you had however many years ago it was, okay? So you've done a significant amount of improvements in my opinion there. I think we just need to finalize it and decide if it's, if it's, it'll work. I'd like to do, and I know we have the person from the public, she'd like to ask some questions. The owner, one of the principals of the site, who'd like to testify. We'll give you one, a couple of ways, I'll leave to the board how they want to handle it. We could finish up, Mr. McDonald's... That's what we're going to do tonight. That's what we're going to do tonight. We're going to finish up, Mr. McDonald, and we quit at 10 o'clock. So we got enough time for Mr. McDonald to finish and ask a question, and then you can bring your, the applicant back for the next hearing where he can testify. So, any other... I'm going to, I want to make sure that we've got all our questions asked of Mr. McDonald. Chaz, you okay down there? Okay. Now, ma'am, if you have a question of Mr. McDonald, now is the time, you can ask the question.
What time were these pictures taken?
Around 2:30 afternoon?
Right, the slowest time of the day.
That's it? Nora, what do we got? What do you got? You just got one witness there. Just a minute, yes, I'd like to call Wassim Chavri. We're not going to hear him tonight. We're not going to hear him tonight. Okay, that would just be... No, because that's just going to open up for questions, and we got six minutes. Let's short the whole testimony. We will leave it to a Duncan Donald's coffee shop, and we'll do that tonight. You have to come back and do it if something else is required. I don't know if we're going to be able to go into conference. I mean, what's everybody's opinion here? He has no more witnesses, we still have to hear from the objector, because she's probably going to want to talk.
I don't want to stay till 10:30.
I think we're going to have to carry the case. I appreciate the hard time with this late hour. I'm sorry, I, you know...
Only because it doesn't end at 10:30.
Well, you know, the problem is that... The doctor volunteers, you're doing this on your own time, or I'm not going to... I mean, people have to get up and go to work. So you have to understand that we're going to make a date right now for this hearing again, and you're not going to get any further than notice, so you're going to have to go by what we say right now, okay? So, Nora.
Yes, I heard.
What do we need, a half hour, probably?
If he needs only half hour, maybe we can do a special from 7:00 to 7:30 on another evening.
Yeah, that would be great. You want to do it next week? 7:00 next week?
Next week is virtual.
Oh, that's remote, I'm sorry. Two weeks, do it 7:00 in two weeks?
We have a whole special meeting.
We already have a special meeting.
July 14.
July 14. 7:00 on July 14? 7:00 on July 14? Give you half hour, okay? I'm sorry, I bet I forgot.
Hold on, I apologize. You already have one. July 28.
July 28. 7:00, July 28. If the board likes it, we can do virtual next week if that's available, if you want to do that.
We have a huge engagement, we have the...
I will not be around.
Yeah, we have that, we have that St. Peters one next week.
That's a special meeting next.
Special meeting. Yeah. All right, so July 29.
28.
28, 7:00, no further notice with whatever extensions are required, and you'll provide, okay? We can... A little outside, any extensions that the board needs, and 7:00, just to confirm 7:00. 7:00 on the 28. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
That's in person here, right?
That's in person. Again, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate it. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right. Heading back out.
Motion to adjourn. The Philadelphia bar was... But the weather, it's not indoors.
Motion to adjourn. Where you are?
Motion to adjourn.
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 Motion to adjourn.